I'd like to call this meeting to order. Due to the COVID-19 health emergency and in order for the Board of Education to conduct its business, this board meeting is being held via video conference and streamed on YouTube on the district website at www ebnet.org. In addition, members of the public may provide comment at this meeting through Zoom by entering the URL, meeting ID, and password you see before you on the screen. Upon joining the meeting, your participation will be muted to ensure that there is no disruption to the business being conducted by the Board of Education. Will the Secretary please call the roll?
Mr. Corangelo.
Here.
Mrs. Chu.
Here.
Mr. Sizmar. Mrs. Gwass. Mr. Hong.
Here.
Mrs. Lax.
Here.
Mrs. Reese.
Here.
Mr. Winston.
Here.
President Becker.
Here, we have a quorum. Please rise to salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance
allegiance to the flag of the United States
of America
and to the Republic
for which it stands, one nation under God, with liberty
a justice for all.
for all. In New Jersey, the open public meeting law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interest is discussed and acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of this act, the East Brunswick Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published at the Board of Education offices. Written notice is also provided to the Sentinel, the Newark Star-Ledger, the Home News and Tribune, and the Municipal Clerk of East Brunswick. All Board of Education meetings with the exception of executive session discussions are videotaped for later broadcast, and individuals who speak at the Board's public meeting should be aware of these videotaping rules. Good evening and welcome to our last meeting before the end of this school year. Unbelievable. How did we get there? Took a lot. Let's start off the meeting with Dr. Valesky's superintendent report.
Thank you, President Becker, and good evening, everyone. I'm happy to report that a variety of school activities have occurred over the past two weeks, marking the end of this school year. Fifth grade moving up ceremonies for all eight elementary schools were completed this week and have been a big success. And I want to give a shout out to John McMiniman for the production of those events. Tomorrow, Friday, June 18th, is the last day of school for all students and staff. Graduation for the class of 2021 will be held on J. Doyle Field at EBHS beginning at 9:30 a.m. tomorrow morning. I'll apologize in advance for the traffic and congestion tomorrow morning, but I promise it'll be worth it as we send off our seniors in one culminating event marking the end of a difficult school year. For my final report this school year, I want to express my appreciation for the entire East Brunswick Board of Education's support of my recommendations over this past school year. I want our community to know that some of the issues have gone through vigorous debate, but without reservation, I can say this board has been introspective and proactive. This board's student-centered focus is at the epicenter of what distinguishes East Brunswick. It's not just words, it's your actions in support of me and the administrative team to ensure the district is well-run. Thank you for your leadership, steadfast resolve, and commitment to the East Brunswick community that EBPS will remain a premier public school district, no matter the circumstances that need to be navigated to achieve that goal. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Valesky. I'm sure at the good of the cause of the board, we'll be hearing more about our appreciation for all the stakeholders this year, but thank you for that. Very lovely and touching. Thank you. Okay, now, for the good of the cause to the public. Members of the public may provide comment at this meeting through Zoom by entering the URL, meeting ID, and password you see before you on the screen. In order to be recognized, use the chat feature, select the Zoom meeting host, then enter and send your name to the host. You will be recognized to speak when your name is called, and individuals will be invited to speak in the order in which we have received your request. The Board of Education recognizes the value of public comment on educational issues and the importance of allowing members of the public to express themselves on school matters of community interest. Participants will be limited to three minutes' duration. Is there anyone wishing to speak to the board tonight?
We have no one currently in the queue.
No one is in the queue?
No.
Okay, seeing none, I close the public portion. We have several resolution of commendations of recognition tonight. Our first one is for the 2021 All Eastern Orchestra. Recommendation, whereas two East Brunswick High School seniors, Hannah Lee and Barun Marotra were accepted to the 2021 Nathmi Hall Eastern Orchestra, and whereas musicians were selected from applicants across 11 states and Washington, D.C., Hannah and Barun participated in the virtual weekend experience, and whereas as a role model for excellence in the arts, Barun and Hannah are an inspiration and motivation for their peers and have brought honor and recognition to their school, the district, and the entire community. Therefore, be it resolved that the East Brunswick Board of Education recognizes and commends East Brunswick High School students Hannah Lee and Barun Marotra and their teachers, Dr. Arvin Gopal and Dr. Brian Tauck, for this outstanding accomplishment. May I please have a motion for this resolution? So moved. Move by Lori, second by LeWu. Is there any discussion? I would just like to say that, that in any year, this would be an outstanding accomplishment. To accomplish it with the added stress, duress of a pandemic is extraordinary. We are so proud of you. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carried. Well done. For our second resolution of commendation, the New Jersey State Seal of Bili literacy, I would like to invite our beloved Superintendent of World Languages, Ruth Chang, to read our resolution.
Thank you, Mrs. Becker. Whereas 51 East Brunswick High School seniors have demonstrated intermediate mid proficiency in a language other than English in a language other than English. And whereas
We have an echo, Bernie. Are you picking it up?
Yes, we do.
Ruth, one minute, please. We don't want any of this to be anything less than perfect.
Ruth, you may continue.
Thank you.
Whereas these seniors have met the English graduation requirement, and whereas the State of New Jersey Department of Education certifies that these seniors have successfully qualified for the New Jersey State Seal of Bili literacy approved by East Brunswick School District. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the East Brunswick Board of Education recognizes and commends the following seniors for having earned the New Jersey State Seal of Bili literacy. Yusuf Shokri, Abdullah El Desuki, Michael Sun, Erin Ma, Honey Wong, Emily Dong, Jasmine Liu, Brandon Gao, Sophie Gao, Abigail Hortonoy, Filza Siddiki, Anika Taneha, Rihanna Nag, Arriba Khan, Elizabeth Mungalski, Janvi Pai, Julie Hamm, Shrini Ayasamaya Jula, Kaitlin Wong, Christina Chen, Vincent Beckler, Harnor Core, Kevin Ernst, Gavin March, Guy Ploner, Kia Thacker, Shria Virjaswaran, Eunice Kim, Neha Rani, Mara Zaki, Jordan Baker, Maya Iskowitz, Gabrielle Ignacio, Nikita Yangar, Navni Core, Marco Landale, Sophia Drolia, Joshua Yi, Sarah Moawad, Jaden Hecht, Riley Chase, Yusuf Chohan, Emily Chu, Enya Madurawala, Catherine Costa, Alexandra Gramulia, Adam Amadi, Liliana Cantillo, Srianswari Swal, Minta Kaune, and Jennifer Adley. Congratulations.
Can I please have a motion for this resolution?
So moved.
Moved by Lori. Second by Barbara. Is there any discussion? Lori?
Very bittersweet because Ruth Chang is part of the reason that our students year after year, and so many of them attain this honor and this level of achievement. So it's so fitting that you read this, and I'm so thrilled to see you reading it. I'm so happy for those 51 students and their families, and I'm hoping that whoever takes up the challenge and fills those big shoes of yours is going to have more and more, and the best tribute we can have to you is to keep building on that number and have it get larger and larger every year. So congratulations to you, your staff, and these wonderful students and their families.
Thank you.
Susanna?
I just also want to echo thanks to Ruth for everything that she's done for the World Language Program. And, and also just, you know, to wish you well in retirement. We're going to miss you dearly. And I am just curious, do you happen to know how many languages are represented by the students here in the, in the tests they've taken?
We have about 45 languages spoken in East Brunswick. Here, I think I have probably about 12 or 13 different languages spoken here. We have students who are native speakers who also were tested, Portuguese, Russian, Arabic, Hindi, Hebrew, in addition to the five languages that we teach.
That's amazing.
So kudos to the families who maintain their own language at home. Kudos to them for continuing that. It's fantastic.
Great. Okay, thank you.
DeWu?
So I 100% agree with what Laura and Susanna said. Ruth, I want to thank you for so many years' devotion to our World Language Program. I believe many of, all our students will miss you. I will miss you too. Thank you.
Thank you for your support.
And Ruth?
It's a teamwork. It's teamwork.
I don't think I could improve on what my colleagues have said. They've said it so beautifully, but I just wanted to tell you, I don't believe a school district is just an inanimate organization. It has a heart and a soul, and you have been such a part of that heart and soul.
Thanks. It's teamwork. It's teamwork.
It is teamwork. You have mentored and established an incredible department, devoted professional teachers who have inspired our children to reach for the stars in terms of the languages they can learn. And all of these children certified Bili literacy seals, you're absolutely right, without the support of their wonderful families, it couldn't be achieved.
Right.
But you have been a piece of our heart and soul.
Thank you. I just want to share that the students are the ones who now have the ability, they have a skill set to build bridges of communication and understanding, right? Beyond, they can reach beyond borders now. So kudos to these students.
I don't think I took a vote yet, Bernie, did I?
Oh, you did not.
Okay, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries. Well done, all of you. Excellent job, students. Excellent. For our third resolution of commendation, I'd like to invite Jeff to please read it.
Thank you, President Becker. I like this one. Resolution of commendation to the student bodies of 2019 and 2020 and the 2020 and 2021 school year. Whereas the student bodies of 2019 to 2020 and 2020 to 21 school years were required to quickly adapt to an unfamiliar learning environment resulting from the COVID-19 pandemic. And whereas the student bodies' remarkable resilience, underline that twice, in adapting to very different worlds, both inside and outside of the classroom, have exemplified the very essence of the East Brunswick Public Schools. And whereas the students will carry and benefit from the experiences they continue to learn importance of adapting to unusual circumstances throughout their lifetime. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the East Brunswick Board of Education gratefully acknowledges and applauds and commends the steadfast perseverance of the student bodies of 2019 to 2020 and 2020 to 2021 school years. Well done, students. Well done.
Can I please have a motion? Moved by Lori.
Second.
Second by LeWu. Is there any discussion? I would like to say that this, this resolution was worded perfectly. And to me, the word that jumps out is perseverance. It categorizes everything our students have done. I cannot begin to imagine myself in your shoes. You're just incredible to have made it through the pandemic, to have accomplished what you have. Just incredible. Thank you for every ounce of courage, dedication, and commitment it took. Thank you. Lori?
That was so beautifully said. And, you know, it's funny, we talk about all the, the working parts and the people, the administrators, the staff, and teachers, everyone who's done so much. And you're right, the students are the ones that stepped up day after day, whether they were in the buildings or online. And what amazed me was seeing the fact that they still were able to create that sense of camaraderie, that you forgot sometimes that some kids never met this year except across the screen. And, you know, I saw with my own kids, they'd have study groups and things like that, that they were able to do, form relationships, and just be kids, and it was just so wonderful to see, and, you know, what a great resolution. Thank you so much for that. Congratulations to all these kids because you not only survived these two difficult years, because that's such a negative connotation. You, you did such a great job. You thrived, you helped each other, and you'll come out better for it. So enjoy your summers because you definitely earned them.
Yeah.
Yeah, to the students, you know, we've had some spirited conversations in my house over the last 16 months, and, and I can tell you, many of us in this room have been through some crazy times in our lives, and we talk about them proudly as old people. Remember the time of the gas crisis, remember this, remember that. But I'll tell you what, you have a story to tell, and you have something to be so proud of that you were able to accomplish the things that Ms. Lax, Ms. Becker said, and what this resolution said. You have done something that in all likelihood, no one will really be faced with again. You came through in amazing shining colors, and I'll tell you, I cannot be more proud of a group of kids in this township. I think you're amazing, and your stories you will tell your grandchildren about these last 16 months. They're going to tell their grandkids and grandkids and grandkids. So take a mask, squeeze it in your, in your scrapbook, have your, have, have Dr. Valesky sign it because that is, that's, that's money. It's, it's, it'll be a memory that you will really, so great job, kids.
Jeff, did you take a peek at my graduation speech for tomorrow?
I, I, something was stolen off my computer. I just assumed it was you.
Spoiler alert, now nobody has to come to graduation tomorrow. They just basically heard my speech. Okay, thank you so much for that beautiful reading, Jeff. Can I, all those in favor? Opposed, abstained, motion carries for our students. Oh, yeah. Aye, folks. Yeah. Okay, and now on to our regular items. We have one item on tonight's Board of Education agenda. Can I please have a motion for item one?
So moved.
Moved by Lori, second by LeWu. Is there any discussion? Mark, was that a hand up to motion or a hand up to discuss?
Move.
Okay, I'll get you next time. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries. On our community programs agenda, we have one item on the agenda tonight. Can I please have a motion for item one?
So moved.
Moved by Lori, second by Mark Corangelo. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Barbara?
Discussion? I just wanted to commend the Community Programs Department for the variety of programs we hear. You have coding enrichment. I mean, during a very unusual year, like we said, they offered both virtually and in person so many different programs and made, made it really wonderful for the students that they had both programs before and after school. So just a thank you out to them.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries. Moving on to our curriculum and instruction agenda. We have two items on the agenda tonight. Before I combine them, would anyone like others separate it out? Seeing none, can I please have a motion to combine items one and two on the curriculum agenda?
Move.
Jeff?
Moved by Lori, second by Jeff. Is there any discussion? Susanna?
I just have a question on the, the chemistry textbook noted that there's a one-year pilot of online digital resources. So I was wondering what our game plan was to assess the digital resource and, you know, what, what we would do with it in subsequent years. And, and is that standard for textbooks to make that an option? Or are the textbooks tending to come with, you know, digital resources?
Dr. Bowley, would you mind?
Sure, they come with digital resources. This is a new set of resources available for the teachers to try out and pilot. So before we commit to the purchase, we thought that we would just try them out and see if we're finding bang for all buck there.
But that would be the trend, that, that textbooks are coming with the digital resources, and that would be the plan to utilize both going forward, right?
Yeah, right. This book, it has some opportunities for students to work out some of the situations in it. So it's, it's, it's a quasi textbook workbook, so the digital resources provide, you know, additional videos, instructional materials students can access at home and in the classroom.
Great. Thank you.
Joyce, I'm sorry, LeWu.
I'm sorry. So Dr. Bowley, how many teachers will participate this pilot program this year?
I think there are about six.
Okay, thank you.
Joyce, do you anticipate that digital resources coming with textbooks will eventually allow us not to have to replace the actual hardcover textbooks, but rather and it will be a cost-saving measure to have a digital version only?
Yes. In many situations, we are moving in that direction. It's much easier, obviously, to update the digital resources than a print book that's out of date quickly. So yes, we are moving in that direction currently.
But President Becker, I do want to caution the board that the textbook publishers are very savvy to the, to the changing dynamic, and the digital format will still cost the district money, even though we won't have physical hardbound copies in the future. They will still charge us for every digital copy we use and license.
And that's an excellent point, Dr. Valesky. I was actually thinking also of how it would save the kids' shoulders in terms of not having as heavy of a backpack to schlep around. Okay.
I see the benefit for, for the, the book. Our children will now carry the books, but they'll cast their eyes. There are many debates about the hardcover textbook and electronic textbook. So we need to take careful look before we adapt or switch to fully electronic textbooks.
Absolutely, and I, I, I think we have every indication that our curriculum team and Dr. Valesky are not rushing into anything, LeWu, but it was a, a, a good point. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Mrs. Becker, if I may, I'm sorry. This should be a roll call. We didn't indicate that on the agenda.
You did not indicate that on the agenda, but that's okay. We will do a roll call for you. Call us.
I'm so grateful. Thank you. Mr. Corangelo.
Yes.
Mrs. Chu.
Yes.
Mr. Hong.
Yes.
Mrs. Lax.
Yes.
Mrs. Reese.
Yes.
Mr. Winston.
Yes.
And President Becker.
Yes, motion carries. Moving on to our Moving on to our facilities agenda, there are two items on it tonight. Before I ask to combine them, is anyone like either separated out? Seeing none, can I please have a motion for items one and two on the facilities agenda?
So moved.
So moved, Jeff.
Moved by Jeff, second by Lori, is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. I hear a bit of an echo again. Bernie, is it apparent to you also?
Yes, it is. I'm not sure where it's coming from, but there is a little feedback.
Okay, I think it's Jeff.
Headphones, not me.
Okay, moving on to our financial services agenda. Before I ask for a motion to combine items one through 15, is there anything anyone would like separated out? Seeing none, can I please have a motion for items one through 15?
So moved.
Moved by Lori, second by Mark Corangelo. Is there any discussion? Okay, will the secretary please call the roll?
Mr. Corangelo?
Yes.
Mrs. Chu?
Yes.
Mr. Hong?
Yes.
Mrs. Lax?
Yes.
Mrs. Reese?
Yes.
Mr. Winston?
Yes.
President Becker?
Yes, except I do abstain on item number 11, report of awarded contracts.
Noted.
Thank you. Moving on to our human resources agenda, there are four items on it. Before I ask to combine these items, would anyone like anything separated out? Seeing none, can I please have a motion for items one through four?
So moved.
Moved by Lori, second by Mark Corangelo. Is there any discussion? Will the secretary please call the roll?
Mr. Corangelo?
Yes.
Mrs. Chu?
Yes.
Mr. Hong?
Yes.
Mrs. Lax?
Yes.
Mrs. Reese?
Yes.
Mr. Winston?
Yes.
President Becker?
Yes, motion carries. We have one item on our staff development agenda tonight. Can I please have a motion for item one?
So moved.
Moved by Lori?
Second.
Second.
Second by Jeff, is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries. On our student services agenda, before I ask for a motion to combine items one through eight, is there anything anyone would like separated out? Seeing none, can I please have a motion for items one through eight?
So moved.
Moved by Lori, second by LeWu, is there any discussion? Barbara?
I just thought it would be nice just to explain to folks about number six, about effective school solutions, how the superintendent in the district is working on the board to try to prepare for people, folks coming back full-time to school and and offering special social and emotional supports. Perhaps someone could explain it better than me, but.
Excellent, excellent point, Barbara. Thank you for bringing it up. Dr. Valeski?
And and thank you, Mr. Reese. And you know, the the board was very supportive of this program and expanding this program. But leading this charge for the district is Dr. Figueroa. So Dr. Figueroa, would you mind saying a few words about this for the?
Absolutely, and thank you again, Ms. Reese, for bringing it up, and and Dr. Valeski for asking me to speak briefly about it. We have looked at the our student body. We realize that this has been a very traumatic time of many reasons and many ways during COVID. The board has been very supportive of our concerns and our issues when making sure that we were as prepared as possible when students come back to school, that they have the supports that they need to help them be academically and socially emotionally successful. So that's really the goal for us. And again, I can't thank the board enough for the support. Just a tremendous amount to our students as we move forward. So thank you again.
And thank you, Lou, and your staff. This program could not possibly be a success if it wasn't for the dedicated staff you have who will implement it. Any other discussion? This is a roll call vote. Will the secretary please?
Mr. Corangelo?
Yes.
Mrs. Chu?
Yes.
Mr. Hong?
Yes.
Mrs. Lax?
Yes.
Mrs. Reese?
Yes.
Mr. Winston?
Yes.
President Becker?
Yes, motion carries. We're now up to committee reports, information items, and for the good of the cause of the board. And tonight, I would like to start out with a presentation from our new student representative, Nora Hennessy. We are so glad to have you. We welcome you. And we look forward to hearing from you. By the way, you have to come every single meeting in the summer. You're not allowed to miss one. Only kidding, Nora. You will not be graded on this. There will be no pop quizzes. We're just happy to have you. So the floor is yours.
Thank you for the introduction. I'm very happy to be here. I might come to some this summer. I did just want to talk about our end of the school year events and about everyone being able to come back together after being virtual for so long. We had our senior awards and our varsity awards, which got some parents in the school and a lot of the students back together, even though it did rain for the senior awards. And then we had the senior night, I believe that was last week. And that was a big hit. I think there were over 400 students that attended that. And they had a lot of fun. I've heard from a lot of my friends that it was very enjoyable just to be able to be together with people and their friends that they haven't seen in a while. And then we have graduation tomorrow, as everyone knows. And we have, I believe Tony talked about the increase in tickets allotted per person, which will allow more families to come and more friends to watch their students graduate. And that is mostly all for the end of the year. Going into next year, we have, Student Council was aiming to plan a beginning-of-the-year event to welcome everyone back to the school and kick off the school year. And we'll work on planning that over the summer, so I may have some reports on that. And I believe we are we are setting up a homeroom representative for each homeroom next year. And that will be our principal's council, that we were hoping to get a wider variety of students and their insight on the school for a more broad report for here and to the principal.
Beautifully done, Nora. Thank you so much. And you got two thumbs up from Dr. Valeski and and a partial thumb from Dr. Figuera. That's very, a partial thumb is good. So to start us off tonight, I just simply want to say, piggybacking on that wonderful resolution that Jeff read. Yes, our students were amazing this year, last year. As I said before, I cannot imagine being in their shoes. But every stakeholder in this district rose to the occasion and surpassed it and got us through a very dark time in a very positive way. From the top down, Dr. Valeski and his incredible central office team, all our administrators, all of our staff, our support staff, all of the parents and guardians and families. We could not have done this without your support and participation. And I know for many of you, it was an opportunity to finally learn that calculus that you managed to get out of in high school, but you had to revisit with your students. I heard from a few parents that they actually enjoyed being the mentor for the homeschooling when our children were on remote, because it gave them an opportunity to go back to the classroom, so to speak. Of course, it wasn't, it was just a few. Most of most of the parents, it was a tremendous amount of work. And finally, again, to our amazing students, to the township of East Brunswick, to all the officials who cooperated with us and made everything possible, all the initiatives we had to do, to all the residents, to all the businesses. This was truly an undertaking by a village. And we are profoundly grateful. Okay, I see Lori's hand.
So we are a village, and I just want to reiterate, this village was led by a very important, patient person, Dr. Valeski. It was actually very nice for me to get to see you get accolades by all the parents at some of the past events that we've had with the National Honor Society, the Senior Awards, because you, sir, take the brunt of everything. You get to hear everything you've done wrong. Every complaint is going to come to you. So we thank everyone. I don't think we thank you enough, because you are the head of this organization, and you take care of everyone, from your staff to the students, to the parents, to every stakeholder that that Vicky has mentioned. So kudos to you again, because while we thank everybody else, we've seen you take a lot, and you've done it with such class and such grace. And those parents that came up to you night after night at those events to thank you, it was good to see that they recognized the work that you put in, because we all talk about the students and the staff, and and they wanted to make sure that that didn't pass us by. And speaking about the events, what Ms. Nora said is so true. It's so nice to see some normalcy. I love seeing all the signs, because it's not just the graduates from high school, it's the fifth grade, and they had their moving up. Hammer Shold had an end-of-year party. And it was so nice to see 600 kids running around Hammer Shold, eating ice cream, eating ices, just being kids and laughing. So we're all going to make it, and you know, good luck to all of us. And I know they said, good luck to you in retirement, Ruth, but I'm still very, very upset that you're retiring. So I wish you the best, but you know, I wish you weren't retiring, so. I hope you miss us a little. I hope retirement is good, but I hope that there's some twinges of, darn, I miss that job.
Yes, absolutely, absolutely. Yes, thank you.
We would knock her back anytime.
Bernie, I just want the record to reflect that I did mention Dr. Valeski's name.
Oh, you absolutely did, and I just was saying, but you know, we talked about it, and we talked about the staff, we talked about the students, we talked about the parents.
No, 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 absolutely.
But you know, he's the one, Vic, you know, we get it too. Certainly, people, the board, for the good, the bad, the ugly.
I was kidding.
Felt that a lot of the pressure rests on on his shoulders.
What you said was lovely. I was kidding.
I just wanted to.
Absolutely.
Well, I I thank you for those very kind words, but I do have to acknowledge Karen Mandler and Janet Angelina in my office, who have talked to a number of very upset parents over the many, many months and have have been, you know, helped me be the face of the district. And and so we have the entire central office team has been the face of the district out and about, communicating the same message. So I'm so proud of them for what we, together as a district, board members and administrators have accomplished. I'm just very proud.
You really should be, because a lot of the board members here are parents, and some of them still with kids in the district, some whose kids went through and will be going through. So you know, we appreciate that on that level, and your staff is absolutely terrific. But you, you, sir, at the end of the day, I don't know how many parents out there realize that you will take phone calls from parents, angry parents, happy parents, you know, you don't hide behind anybody, and I think that's just very admirable. And you do have a terrific staff. You did good.
Well, thank you. But I think the representative tonight, Nora, and then Tony before her, who's going to be, you know, graduating tomorrow. I think they represent a student body that, as you said earlier, as Jeff so eloquently said, you know, they're they persevere, they're resilient, and and they represent our future. And I am so confident that we are all in good hands with the capabilities all these young people have demonstrated over the last 15 months.
Thank you, Dr. Valeski, and again, beautifully said, Lori.
Yeah, they get better. Nora, you're going to do terrific. I have no doubt, you're so well spoken. And every year, we have a student that comes and knocks our socks off, and we think, what are they going to send us next year? How can they be better? You know, Tony was terrific. You're, it's it's uncanny. You're all personable and bright. And the reports just make some of us feel like we're back in the high school and yeah. You are our future, and that makes me very, very happy.
I see Jeff's hand up.
Yeah, I don't want to embarrass Dr. Valeski anymore and keep praising him for his efforts. I think it's, I think it's been very well stated. And and another thing that Dr. Valeski did was put a little spring in the parent's step in getting the kids back to school. And the tip of the hat to the parents for persevering through all of this. I know we didn't give them a resolution, but you know, if you do take, if you do, I'll I'll take it. I think it's great. Parents, what I've gotten in the feedback, I know you've you you feel a lot of negative. And I guess the positive ones don't call you, but I I heard a lot in this township, and there was an enormous amount of praise. And the fact that you could add pandemic management to your resume makes you that much more special. I think I think you did an outstanding job. I know the parents truly are, for the most part, very happy. So I know I am. So so with that, thank you very much to you and your staff, Karen, and everybody. Do a job exceptionally well done.
Thank you.
Any other board members? Susanna?
I just have a committee report to give, and on the theme of our amazing students. This past Tuesday, the Human Relations Council hosted a Facebook Live event, and it was called Unity at East Brunswick High School. So if you missed it, it is available at the East Brunswick Human Relations Council Facebook page. And a diverse group of students got together to share their experiences and perspectives about how they connect with their backgrounds and their cultures. And one thing I wanted to point out is that many of the students pointed to and highlighted the benefits of the many extracurricular programs and and clubs that are available at the high school as as being invaluable to them in in terms of growing and and learning as individuals within groups. So there was a lot of accolades for the benefits of meeting in the programs and the variety of the programs. And the programs that that bring students of of all backgrounds and cultures together were all highlighted in that evening event. I was just so impressed by the the young men and women who spoke at that at that event and talked about their, you know, their experiences. So I encourage you to listen in if you didn't have a chance to do so at the live event. Thank you. And and of course, I, you know, I just want to echo everybody else's praise for the entire staff, students, parents, the entire community. You know, the the days are are brightening up now and really looking forward to graduation tomorrow.
Before I call Lori again, was there anyone else? Lori, again.
I know, so quiet.
Barbara stuck her hand in. Okay, Barb.
After Lori's phone.
Lori, Barb.
I think I just wanted, I forgot, since we're speaking about events, I just wanted to tell everyone, now that school is out and we should all be outdoors, the annual VFW Post 133 Benefit 5K Walk/Run. Barbara, we know, because Barbara and I have walked slash run. On July 25th. It is co-sponsored by the VFW and the East Brunswick Education, their pride in public education. If anyone has come to it before, it's a great organization, it's a great event. It's a lot of fun. You do not have to run, you can walk it. But I just wanted to tell everybody, you know, look for it. You can still sign up. They give you a T-shirt, and they have the road closed off. It's a great event, and it's a worthwhile cause. So again, it's July 25th. If you want information, you can go to the VFW website. For any of the board members, I have this sheet here, but I just wanted to do that. And don't kill me. Vicky, you know, it's funny, I have to just thank you as well, because you ran these meetings during the pandemic, and we all talk about Zoom. It really is not fun. No one likes Zoom. And I have to say, as someone who can't stand being on the Hollywood Squares, and you never know if someone can hear you, if there's feedback, you ran these meetings for the last 16 months like a rock star. So good for you. Not knowing who to call and where to see, as long as we're all talking about, you know, all the good that people have done. It's no easy feat, so.
Thank you so much.
And now I'll stop talking.
Thank you so much, Lori. That was really very lovely. And of course, it couldn't do it. it couldn't do it alone, even though sometimes I feel like I'm ruling my world from my, the world from my family room. Everybody on this screen, we got through all these meetings like rock stars, like pros. So thanks to everybody here, but thank you, Lori. That was lovely. Barbara?
I thank you. I just, my sincere and heartfelt thank you to everybody, really, our fellow board members. But Dr. Valeski, you know, it's been said, I'm echoing what has already been said. But to you and the administration, the principals, the teachers, the staff, the parents, the families. Honestly, I think some people just take it for granted, some of the things that we have had here, even the things like the meals, like the distribution of the meals, that's a massive operation. And the fact that it's continuing in the summer, it runs so well. So many people have been helped by that. And things like the technology, being able to, you know, you had your staff and worked so hard, so diligently in the technology department to, you know, when we had a trouble with something, when there was a computer that was broken, it got fixed right away. You know, just there's so many different examples, even with having a vaccination clinic. I mean, it's like a one-stop shop. So really, I don't, I'm sure, you know, I represent the whole board to thank you for all that you've done, all that your staff has done. And the parents have been amazing and the kids. But if it wasn't for the fact that we have such a wonderful superintendent administration, our assistant superintendents, the whole, the whole central board, it wouldn't have happened. And I think sometimes when we're in East Brunswick, you just think, well, this is how it works. But it doesn't work that way every place else. And it really works well here. And we thank you for for everything.
And this seems to be the night for shout-outs. And Barbara, you touched upon something very important. This was a year when we needed technology more than we've ever needed it before and last year too. And Nicholas, what tronic are you here tonight? I think I see you.
I I am here, President Becker.
You guys are the real rock stars. Everything you and your staff did to support all our teachers, our administrators, our students and our parents was mind-boggling, mind-boggling. Dr. Valeski had the foresight to prepare us with the technology going into this, not knowing that we were about to enter a quarantine that was only supposed to be a few weeks and that extended 16 months, so to speak. What you did, Nick, you and your staff, was enable education to continue in East Brunswick. And we are profoundly grateful.
Your statement humbled me and I really give great praise and thanks to the entire IT department. Very dedicated group of people. Thank you.
Good job, Nick. President Becker, if I could mention one, one more thing real quick.
Okay.
You know, what we do as an organization is all about relationships. And I can't go without saying that, you know, we have, we have a good relationship with East Brunswick Education Association and the East Brunswick Principals and Supervisors Association. And they've been partners at the table in the planning for every next step that we took and have been supportive in the communication, consistent communication. So I applaud Dr. Dana Zbicki and Mr. Andy Scanlon, who lead those organizations for their efforts. And, you know, it's just, everybody's focused on students. And from the board on down, I said it earlier, the student center focus is what is the hallmark of our success. And and people who have, people reached out to me today who have been relatively temporary employees at East Brunswick. And that's what they're impressed about, the people they're working with that are the the tried and true East Brunswick employees, how everybody is student-centered. And they haven't seen that in other districts they've been working in. So, you know, kudos to everyone. It's just been, it's been an experience we don't want to repeat. But everybody not only stepped up to the challenge, but they exceeded the challenge. So thank you.
Talk about running a meeting remotely. How about running an entire building remotely? As our building leaders did, or just running your classroom remotely, as all our staff did. As you said, Dr. Valeski, it was a mammoth effort and done so well. Anyone else wishing to speak? We do have a need for closed session. The Board of Education must discuss matters which are not appropriate for discussion in a public meeting. These subjects are within the exceptions to the Open Public Meetings Act. And the Board of Education intends to discuss matters as follows. Those items in tonight's agenda. The length of the closed session is estimated to be one hour, after which the public meeting of the board shall reconvene. An action will not be taken. Can I please have a motion to go into closed session?
So moved.
So moved.
Moved by Lori, second by Jeff. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Abstain? Motion carries. We're going into close. Good night. Thank you for joining us. Keep your fingers crossed for good weather tomorrow for graduations.
Happy summer.